My name is Fred Cook and I drive school bus.
My name is LeAnn Murchee and I'm a school bus driver for TCAPS. It's been a very wonderful experience.
When I first hired in, one of the previous bus drivers told me that this particular job, driving a school bus, is the best job on earth. So I immediately took to it and I have to agree that this is one of the best jobs that anyone can do.
What prompted me in the very beginning, I have a college degree, and she said, "You're in the safest vehicle in the world on the road." So I thought, "Well, you know, I'm gonna try," because I would be on the same time schedule as my own children. And when they were off, I was off. When holidays, I was, you know, I was there. So it was the best of both worlds. TCAPS offers jobs elsewhere within the system.
Between routes, I used to, for 12, 13 years, I did lunch duty over at East Middle School, and now I paint.
They're real good about finding people, the hours that they need during the course of the day to make the job great. We have MESA insurance, the whole district has it. It's awesome. It's the best health insurance. We offer a 401K. There's a sign-on bonus. It's a win-win situation.
The most important thing, I think, coming to work at TCAPS is you understand that you are part of a team. It's a part of a collective, you know? It's not just bus drivers and then versus teachers. It's not that. We all are in this thing called education together.
If a person likes kids, generally likes kids, this is a perfect job.
So I'm talking to kids all day, and that experience is really heartwarming and I continue to understand what it means to be a part of the community.
You are an educator. You have a chance to touch children's lives every day, and don't think that you don't. You are such an important part of the wheel of education.
Having a quorum present, I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Board would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live on TV 190 or online at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. LeBlanc's 3rd grade class from Blair Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we are at the review/approval portion of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve or any change?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Give it to Erica, who's close, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to public comment. Just a little heads up, I know this is a heated subject. Welcome everyone to speak. We do have a time crunch that we do have to be done at 6:45. I'm gonna try and not speed anyone up, but please, if you can, be concise. We do want to make sure we have time to get to the subject matter, so do appreciate it. So with that, the Board has set aside this time for public comment.
Do we have a timer since Josie's not here?
As I said, one of you can... What's that?
Card. For public comment.
Do I have a card?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
That's fine. So the Board has set aside this time for public comment, and individuals addressing the Board shall have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks on related to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process outlined in Board Policy 0167.3.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Actually, what we do have to do, so just keep it, is if you can write your card and turn it into Megan, and it does have to be done in the order that the cards turned in. So she'll call you.
Do this?
Yes, sorry.
Call this one and call your representative.
Yeah. Go ahead, Meg.
Okay. Sarah Redman. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and for your service. I am here about the issue of beading on graduation caps, and I would vote to allow that for a couple of reasons. Graduation is normally such a joyous time, when we celebrate so many things about our graduates. We recognize their accomplishments and them as individuals. We do it through scholarships, through awards, through endless open houses with picture boards that they have created. Why not allow a celebration of heritage? And why not allow the caps and gowns to be part of that celebration? I'm sure you've gone to a college graduation where we wear, they may wear something because they're African-American, or Asian, or of any, many different heritages. And last but not least, I hate to see you make this decision out of fear of what could happen. Let's celebrate our kids instead.
Good.
My name's Mike Detmer. I am a resident in Peninsula Township. I'm here, and I guess I should admit that I'm a lawyer and I'm a former United States attorney for this district. I'm here asking you not to repeat history. Fifty years ago, believe it or not, Jim Olson, my law partner then, and I sued you, sued your predecessors, on behalf of some students whose hair was too long. They were protesting the Vietnam War. They believed in this political cause, and so did we. That expression of their views about the war riled some of the TCAPS board members. What happened after that was Judge Noel Fox, a wonderful federal judge now, long passed away, ordered the TCAPS board down to Grand Rapids, and he was very respectful, as we are in the federal court, but he asked the board members to sit in the front row of the court, not scattered through the back. And he came up to the podium, got off the bench, and talked to you, talked to your predecessors, about the First Amendment, the right of expression, the right of the responsibility of a governing board like a Board of Education to look expansively at expression, religious freedom, cultural freedom, our rights as citizens, our students' rights as students to express themselves. And this, I understand, this is a policy issue. This is not a litigation issue, but this policy seemed to have been adopted 50 years ago, at least until someone or some body of history forgot it. And so I only would ask that you give it your utmost consideration. It's so important. It's so important to students. Thank you.
Thomas Peters?
Honey, Tom Peters, indigenous, Grand Traverse Band de Bendagos. I'm a member of the Grand Traverse Band, and firstly, I'd like to say that we are the indigenous people of this area. This is our homeland and has been our homeland for thousands of years. Life has changed significantly for us. We have a different way and a different approach of life than what you might consider the typical, normal approach of American life today. We continue to live in our territory, in our homeland, but still have always retained our sovereignty. We understand that it's important to get an education. And in this world, and even our ancestors thought it was very important, when they signed the Treaty of 1836 and 1855. Thirty-six transferred 14 million acres over to the state, federal government. In 1837, the state became the state of Michigan because of that. And so that was a lot of transfer. That was a lot of funds that was transferred over. And then we suffered quite a bit of trauma, too, over the last 500 years. And I think it's been in the news that a lot of our students had to attend boarding schools. My grandfather attended Carlisle Boarding School in the late 1800s, and they take children away from their families, and they had taken them far away so they wouldn't have influence of their communities. And something that really happened is that Henry Platt, who was the founder of that boarding schools, had to, he said that one of the reasons was to educate and assimilate Native Americans. But in some of the notes we've seen recently, he said that these children are held hostages so that their families back in the reservation wouldn't act up. And so all that trauma and stuff is important. Another thing is that we, as Native American people, didn't come as immigrants to this country. This is our homeland. This place in which we call Gichi Wicwidong is our homeland that's here. And so when migrants come here, they have to abide by the laws and the policies and everything that are on this territory. But as the original people, we never had that in mind, because this is our own place, is where we live. This is where we, we had, our ancestors are still buried here. So that's another important issue that we have here. There's something that is different in modern society, and the separation between religion and state is different in a lot of places. And that's kind of an important aspect, because in our way, we don't have a thing called religion. We have a way of life, and those things are incorporated into our life.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you very much.
Amy Yee?
Amy Yee?
Hi, thank you for listening to our public comment today. I recently learned that TCAPS is refusing to allow tribal members to put beading on their graduation caps. Native graduates should be able to acknowledge this important cultural milestone without sacrificing their tribal identity. Why is this so important? Because historically and systematically, their culture and identity has been abhorrently taken away. Genocide, stolen land, families displaced and tortured, forced assimilation, children abused and placed in boarding schools and/or murdered, erasure of livelihood and culture, ancestral harm, generational trauma. The cultural importance of wearing tribal beads is significant for this board to recognize. The following excerpts are from a recent ACLU article, "To Wear Tribal Regalia Is To Reclaim Indigenous Identity And Honor Ancestors Who Could Not Do The Same." In 1879, when boarding schools became mandatory, indigenous students were given military-style quilts in place of their regalia. Their hair was cut, they were given Christian names. This was the start of American genocide, by Norma Rosebud Sue. Given this information, I urge you to take the opportunity to let our community know that you respect the rights of tribal graduates to wear regalia on their caps, that you recognize the struggles and sovereignty of tribal graduates, and will not perpetuate further harm and trauma for them and their families. To support tribal graduates delivers a meaningful message to our community that honors wisdom, truth, dignity, and respect. This is an opportunity for you, the TCAPS board, and for our community to hold a higher standard. It's the right thing to do. Please support the Anishinaabe graduates whose ancestral lands we reside on. Thank you.
Christina John?
Honey, everybody. Odamon kwan indigenous, mashishabinga nojaba, Traverse City Nenda, mokua nodum. My name is Christina John. I am a local artist, and I just saw one of my beading caps walk in. I just got really excited. So I do a lot of beadwork for caps for mostly high school students, and as mostly everybody has talked about, like it's part of our culture. When I ask how they want these beaded, it's not like they just pick random colors. These children have gone to ceremonies. They have gotten their colors, their clan. I've even done beadwork where I've taken apart a piece that was owned by a relative, or like a grandmother or grandfather, and incorporated those beads into the side. So the brim of it, like it's a huge significance for us. Whenever I get, and they're gifted, too. Not one student has ever purchased their own graduation cap. It's always like the aunties and the uncles. It's not easy to bead these. It takes a long time. They are expensive, so when we do get these tribal graduates, just across the country, I haven't done it just in local areas. I've done it for Canada, Washington. I think there was one even out at, oh God, hollywhack, can I think of what the reservation is up there in the Badlands? It's one of the poorest reservations out there.
Pine Ridge.
Pine Ridge, thank you, yes. So when they come up with this money, it's not easy to come up with all of this money, just, but they do, like the whole community gathers around to help pay for this so that way these children can celebrate this milestone. You know, I don't know if you guys had read the Record Eagle, but I was quoted saying that our graduation rates are higher, it's a higher standard for us to graduate in our community. You know, we have one of the lowest graduation rates. We have one of the highest dropout rates. A lot of that has to do with adversity. When you hear a lot of our arguments and our pleads, it's talking about historical trauma. And I think a lot of people think back in the 1800s. You know, that's not really what's going on. You know, it's my grandparents. It's my aunties. It's my uncles who have faced that adversity, and those are still even being faced today. Over in Wisconsin, in Black Falls, there was a teacher's aide who was recorded talking to a native student, saying, "Why should I give two blanks about your education when you don't? Just go collect your paycheck." You know, that was, what, three months ago? So the things that we're facing, the hardships that these children are facing, it's a lot, you know? So when there's the argument to unify so that way everybody's wearing the same colors, graduation caps...
Thank you, Ms. John.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jessie Ward? Jessie Ward?
As you indicated, my name is Jessie Ward, and I am a graduate of Traverse City High School, but also a member of the Grand Traverse Band. And I have to say that, as Christina mentioned or alluded to about the difficulty in graduation rates, I'm one of those statistics that beat the odds. But the odds are still against us as we have our children in the school system. And so I think that it is important to understand that when the child is, or the young adult is graduating, when, to allow them to wear that beaded cap or a feather, that's allowing them to carry their ancestors forward with them through that adversity, and also their heritage. And, sorry, I got my note here going off on me. This graduation here, it's not your graduation, right? And when you look back on it, it will simply be remembered as the time where there was some conflict. But when the graduating student looks back on it, that is going to be a significant event in their life, and it also is going to be, you know, you guys have the power in whether they're gonna remember that in a wholesome way or in an oppressed way. So I want to point out, too, that a wise man once said that if you're allowing your practice and your traditions to get in the way of the good that you can do, then you're not, that tradition is not serving you well. And that's what's happening here. Or actually, I do have confidence that you're gonna make the right decision, but I still gotta say what I gotta say here. Traditions have been an important component, right, of human nature. But one of the things, one of the reasons that we have those traditions is for a feeling of wellness and a feeling of belonging. And if you take that away, simply because you want everyone to look the same, then you're not celebrating, you're not celebrating that achievement. So I just think that it's gonna be important to welcome the students and add that traditional component to their cap. It's going to be important...
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
And you're not going to take away, but you're gonna...
Thank you.
...enhance your event.
Anna Barantore. I apologize for the last name.
Hello, my name is Anna Barantos.
Thank you.
I'm a member of the Grand Traverse Band and a former TCAP student. I did graduate from Suttons Bay High School. Many of my friends had beaded caps at Suttons Bay. It's a great thing for them to do all together. It's a great thing for them to do altogether. A lot of my friends sat around beading their caps. I did not personally bead mine. I do regret it. Having something with you at graduation that you can take with you for the rest of your life, it's almost more important than the actual diploma, you know? It really is your unique and traditional identity displayed for everyone, but also for you to have for your life. And it is a very significant and emotional thing that you carry with you with your cap and gown, and it would do no harm to allow it, it only does harm to not allow it. So what is the question, really? Thank you.
Erin Chivis. Again, I apologize if I don't have the last name correct.
Got it.
Got it?
Hi, I'm Erin Chivis. I'm actually the new cultural department manager for GTB. I thought this would be a good opportunity to come here and meet some of you guys face to face, because I would like to start getting into some of your guys' PDs for sure, coming up for some cultural development, or cultural professional development, that would be kind of cool. But I think this is an opportunity that needs to be addressed as far as beading the caps, because traditionally, a lot of our stuff, as you've heard, you know, these colors aren't just randomly picked. Each one of us, if we go to ceremony, we actually have colors that follow us around. Those colors are actually money to our spirits that help us out, are our helper spirits. Those animals that we have beaded on us, those are our helper animals, those are things that help us spiritually and guide us. And so those things that we're beading, as you'll probably see, I see some awesome work over there as beaded caps, but those aren't just something that we thought would look cool. It's something that helps us and guides us. And if those things, if you look at our traditional regalia from a long time ago, I mean, yeah, you see us in our street clothes today, but those things were adorned with our colors and our animals that helped us be better people. And so to further that, that was a strong spiritual connection to the things around us. Everything, and our point of view has a spirit, has, you know, even the things that we have today, these metals and all the new technology, it still came from the same place, it still came from Mother Earth. So we're looking just to, I guess, acknowledge those things as helping us and bringing us, helping us through that time in their life. These young ones, you know, they did something great, and I want to make sure that those guides and those spiritual guides will be there to help them on their progress throughout their life. And, you know, it's something that they could add on to as well. It's something that until recently, we weren't able to do. And I know I look around this room and there aren't very many old faces, but as soon as like 1978, that was the first time we were able to practice our religion out in the public, to be spiritual people, to be who we are. And that's within a lot of our lifetimes. Mine, it's only a few years before I was born. And so to be until that moment in time, and for a lot of those things to be unheard or unable to do out in the public, we had to hide in the woods, deep in the woods, and we lost a lot of things because of that. And so I want to make sure that we, it's a different time, we think it's 2023, but yet here we are having this discussion. And so I want to make sure that we're having the impact that we can for these young ones, because for a long time, we didn't have that self-identity. I didn't grow up acknowledging that within myself. I grew up in Grand Rapids, came up here, and that's when that self-identity came to be. And that's how I can truly attribute that to being up here and being back around my people and able to sit here and be in the position I am, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chivis.
I want to say me guech, and I hope you guys make the right decision.
That is the last public comment card I have.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. All right. Few items we just have to get through that should be relatively quick, but on the consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second, all right. Megan, please conduct, oh, no, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. First discussion item on the agenda is a resolution in support of the Northwest Education Services General Fund operating budget. Defering to Dr. Wagner.
Yeah, so again, this is an annual thing that we do. The ISD has to pass their budget again by July 1, just as we do. By law, they have to present their general fund. But again, this is the smaller fund, actually. The special education fund is the larger fund and services, as well as the career and tech education fund is a separate. This provides a lot of some of the professional development and some of those things. But we've had the chance to take a look at that. We appreciate that support and feel that it's in order for the board to support it.
Okay. Is there any board member questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education supports the Northwest Education Services General Fund operating budget for the 2023-2024 as presented.
I second.
Okay. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next discussion item, it's the adoption of resolution approving designating electoral representative alternatives and individuals to cast votes at TBA Northwest Education Services, June 5, 2023, biannual election. Defering to Dr. Wagner.
Okay, so again, the Northwest at our intermediate school district, it is a bit of like the Electoral College as far as how we nominate board members to it, and they try and get a cross-section of the districts in our area. No district can have more than two board members from that school district on their board. So we already have one member from Traverse City, and there are two seats up, and there are only two people that have submitted their names for those positions. One is from Traverse City, which would be the second from our district to be on that board. The other is from Kingsley. So again, two people have stepped up and have experience serving in education. And so it is recommended for the board to have their representative, which the board has previously selected, to submit their ballot for those two people at the ISD meeting for nomination for board members.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions? Do I have a motion?
I will move that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to designate Trustee Bird as this district's representative for the electoral body, which will elect two candidates to the vacancies on the Board of Northwest Education Services Michigan on Monday, June 5, 2023, and Trustee Moon Moore as an alternate in the event the designated representative is unable to attend. The designated representative and alternative are further directed to cast a vote on the first ballot on behalf of this board for Lisa Thomas of Traverse City and Elizabeth Laco of Kingsley.
Second. All right. Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to the discussion item, why most people are here, obviously, graduation requirements and just a few notes before we get into that. I appreciate everyone being here at this time for the public. This is, we did move, our next meeting was in June 1, and we didn't feel that was appropriately enough time to address the issue, so we did want to bring it forward. We had a quick kind of check, and this was virtually the only time that we could get everyone together, and we did have a short window. So I apologize for, you know, relatively late notice, and for those who I know want to be here and have expressed frustration at not being able to be here to make public comments. But we have heard all of those comments via email and have hopefully responded to virtually all of them at this point. Before I defer to Dr. Wagner, some of the history is this did come to our attention early this month, followed up by a formal letter, I believe on May 9, to the board that we received, kind of addressing the issue and laying out what was the issue we were just about to discuss. Because of the tight timeframe, we're suddenly sensitive to wanting to have that discussion and the legal sensitivity of having to potentially have that discussion. At the same time, the superintendent was very limited in his capability to solve the situation because we did find an old board policy that we'd be discussing that basically said that the Board of Education, i.e. this group here, has to approve the cap and gown that the student is wearing. That was in place before our digital records began in 2010, but it is nevertheless there, and there is no court order or anything or right now that would indicate to the superintendent that he could ignore that policy. So with that in mind, there was a call for this special meeting, and that's why we're here, to discuss. I will tell you that we, because of Open Meeting Act, I don't think a lot of us know exactly what should understand, I think we can guess, so this will be an interesting experiment for all of us. So with that, deferring to Dr. Wagner.
Okay, so I've had the opportunity to provide the board with multiple documents. I think that our attorneys, Trune Law and Rob Dietzel, did a really nice job outlining for the board different policies that are around the country, a little bit of history for those items as far as, there are many states that actually have laws specifically that I think address graduation attire, especially for our members of tribal nations and specifically have that. But we also, there are states that don't, and Michigan is one of those. So again, going back to our policy that's there, it does specifically state in the graduation policy that it's the Board of Education that approves the cap and gowns, and our attorneys feel as well that any modifications to so would also come under that policy. So I think we've had the chance to give you Trune's recommendations and their letters of some different directions the board could go. We've also given you some sample policies from other districts of the way that they've gone about doing, allowing any modifications for this. And so also with you, as requested by at least one board member, to have some of our other policies that deal with student appearance as well here for you to take a look at. And so it's really the board's purview. The interesting part, when we did do the policy research, is we get our policies from NEOLA. If you look at NEOLA that's adopted in other districts and look at our policy on graduation, at some point, the board, way back sometime before 2010, actually added the language that the board approves the cap and gown. We do not see that in other districts that have the exact same NEOLA policy. So we're not able to really track down, because we don't have records of the board's packets past 2010, can't tell when that was added, if it was immediately put in. But essentially, because this is a policy that we're looking at, any modifications to the policy, any enactment of it would be immediate, it doesn't require a second reading because it is a current policy if the board chose to revise it. And so you should have lots of different thoughts and ways that Trune has given you to take a look at this and what direction that the board chooses to go.
All right. And just before I open up to board member comments, one last thing as well is, regardless of what we feel we have to do or should do, I do want to acknowledge that it is late in the proceedings, and just so you know, the graduation ceremony is no small undertaking of planning. I was blown away by the grandeur of, especially TCAPS with the size of the district, its graduation ceremony and the planning that goes into that. So we definitely are very receptive and understanding of the additional work and stress that this is going to place on many of our staff. So I wanted to say that upfront, because obviously that's not going to be a driving force of the decision, but it's certainly, I want to acknowledge that they're going to feel the brunt of it on implementation of anything we do. So with that, I will open up for questions.
I don't have questions, but I'm happy to kick off comments, and I've got three main points. They are all interrelated. First, I want to make clear that in the past two-plus years serving on this board, I had not heard prior to May 1 of a request from the Grand Travers Band of Ottawa and Chippewa Indians for feathers or beadwork to be worn at graduation, and I was unaware that TCAPS was unofficially allowing feathers but prohibiting beaded caps. When I learned more details about the May 1 meeting between the superintendent and the Grand Travers Band chairman, I immediately expressed my support for the band's request, and at that point in time, I thought it would be cleaned up through administrative channels. My personal conviction is that Native Americans from any tribe should be allowed to wear cultural or spiritual items that are meaningful to them. Needless to say, Native Americans have suffered all sorts of discrimination and attempts at assimilation for centuries, and it is long overdue that we should right the wrongs of the past. So to me, this is non-negotiable. Allowing indigenous students to express themselves in this manner on a day celebrating their success is also upholding our board resolution on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Second, once this request came to the full board's attention last week to look at this as a policy matter, under our graduation requirements policy number 5460, I observed that there is neither a prohibition nor an express authorization of cultural, religious, or other types of objects to be worn at graduation ceremonies. So essentially, we could keep the status quo. Our policy only says students participating in commencement exercises are required to wear the cap and gown attire specified by the Board of Education during the entire commencement ceremony, except that a student who, at the time of the commencement ceremony, is in active military service in a branch of the Armed Forces of the United States of America will be permitted to wear the designated dress military uniform of the branch in which the student is then serving on active duty, end of quote. Side note, I am fine with the provision for members of the Armed Forces to wear their military uniform, too, and I don't think anyone is questioning that provision either. Third, to address any concerns about students potentially wearing offensive or inappropriate objects or messages at graduation, I'd like to point to our existing student appearance policy number 5511 that is already in effect every day of the year. This policy was revised at the recommendation of TCAPS administration last September and was approved by this Board of Education on October 10, 2022. Excuse me, two current trustees were not serving at that time. This policy is also referenced in the Student Parent Secondary Handbook on page 44, which all students are required to sign, quote, "accepting personal responsibility for following all information and expectations presented," end quote. The policy reads as follows, "In order to establish and maintain a productive, safe, and appropriate learning environment and instill respect for the educational environment, students shall maintain a reasonable standard of apparel that is not disruptive to the educational process. The following list is meant to serve as a guideline but is not an exhaustive list. Clothing may not promote or encourage the use of drugs, alcohol, or tobacco products. Clothing may not exhibit illegal activities, vulgarities, obscenities, profanities, sexually explicit language or suggestions, or ethnic, religious, or gender intimidation. Students must wear a shirt and bottom that covers the buttocks, pelvic region, and chest. Students must wear shoes. Clothing may not reveal undergarments. Swimwear is not permitted. Head coverings that obscure the face except as a religious observance or medical masks may not be worn. And lastly, an administrator may request a change in attire when a student's apparel does not meet the expectations above and/or creates a disruption to the educational environment," end quote. So where do we go from here? I suggest that we incorporate a brief reference in our graduation requirements policy number 5460 to be, quote, "in compliance with the student appearance policy number 5511," rather than introduce language that would differ even in the slightest and therefore raise questions and uncertainty.
All right. Good starting point right there. Are there discussions on that item or any other comments?
I mean, I'll add, as the longest-serving board member, this is my fifth year of board service, I have never had this come across my desk as a board member to approve that I can remember. So it was disheartening to hear that we, as a board, were denying these students.
Okay?
I'll come back.
Okay. I just noticed, and hopefully this is part of the discussion, there's a very interesting little section in the Jordan School District's policy, and there's a section that deals specifically with graduation. They say that graduates are expected to wear the prescribed cap and gown without alteration. They say that graduates are expected to wear the prescribed cap and gown without alterations. That was their second. But under that, they make a number three, which says graduates will be allowed to wear recognized items of religious or cultural significance in a dignified manner. And I feel that that would be appropriate. The second thing that I think is also important is, you know, in this room, we had two presentations on the portrait of graduate, and we had attributes we expect of our graduates. And some of those are maturity. And I would like to see students be able to weigh in as well in some of the dress that they use. They will be the ones most likely to remember the graduation ceremony more than anybody else that participates. Maybe a grandmother or grandfather, but otherwise it's a student, the person graduating. And so with that in mind, at some point, I hope we can actually hear from students on what's appropriate. So I think one of the things I'd like the board to consider is that we allow for recognized items of religious and cultural significance in a dignified manner for the current one, which is roughly a weak way. But then in a year, we come back and revisit and hopefully also have a little bit of input from the student body who are graduating. Not from the 10th and 8th graders, but from the folks that are actually... This is their ceremony that's coming up. So I'd like us to consider that as well. And you know me, I always screw up my motions. So if anyone is inclined to think that that's appropriate, I'll let them make a motion.
I'm interested in more discussion.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I would, again, reiterate, you know, the first I had heard about this was on May 11th, actually. I know, Josie, you said May 1st, but we... First email I went back and looked was May 11th from, I think, Jane Roll where this came up. So... And this will be my third graduation during my time. So again, it never come up in any of the previous two graduations. So it is disheartening that we're having to discuss this. I was unaware of the policy. And yeah, I guess, and we've talked a lot about it. I actually probably would prefer Josie's suggestion just because, you know, I mean, it already refers to an existing policy. And I think that, like you said, that, you know, I think the students are mature enough to decide what is appropriate and what's not appropriate. And, you know, if there's a line, you know, obviously somebody will be there to monitor it, but I don't think... I trust that students will make the appropriate choice.
The other thing is I believe that there may have been an Eagle Scout that would have liked to have wear some insignia. And I would understand that. That's similar to a different kind of honor code. And I believe that there may have been someone who was Jewish that had religious attire that he would have liked as part of his graduation attire. And that's why I was thinking a little bit more broad, to represent the full student body.
I mean, I guess I would just say that, you know, if a student really wanted to show appreciation to their parents, for example, I mean, I know that's a common one that happens in college. You know, people say like, "Thanks, Mom," or "Thanks, Dad," or "Thanks, Parents," you know? I mean, you know, if they played an important role in that student's life to get to that part of their, you know, on that stage, like, by all means, like, I think that that's appropriate for them to express gratitude in that way, just as it is for anyone to be individual and have their expressive thoughts.
Just to help maybe guide, first of all, I've said this in multiple emails, and I think all board members agree, there's pretty much no policy rushed that's a good policy. We'll probably be back here talking about tidying up this policy again sooner or later, but I... Can we... I guess, I think at this point, I've got enough board member feedback that we acknowledge that we are going to make a change to allow this practice so we can get that part at least understood. So with that, then I think we can go straight into the policy. And yeah, I am going to defer to you next. I was going on the time, so I was going to defer to Holly next. No, you were definitely next, unless you wanted to defer.
Okay. So I appreciate all the comments of my fellow trustees, as well as the people that came and emailed. I'm very... Felt really strong in my heart to see our cultural people here, our elders here. That's a special visit for us, for some of these people that came up and spoke tonight. I just want to honor the significance of that. So whether we've participated, or like it or not, we're part of a system that systematically over hundreds of years tried to take the culture out of our Native people, whether it was by cutting their hair, or not allowing them to speak their language, or forcing them to wear a boarding school uniform. And, you know, these graduation caps are no different, right? The requirement that they only be allowed to wear one thing, and that is a rule that we didn't create. We've never been able to express our culture in our graduation, not until today, hopefully, right? Some students were allowed to wear feathers since 2018, but students have been asking for years about the beadwork, and it's been part of the conversation before everybody got here. And, you know, our superintendent was not there either for those conversations. So it's... We do know that that's the case. We weren't hearing about it. But we do know now. I myself asked our school principal if my son could wear beadwork, and I was denied. So that... I know that practice has happened over and over and over again. Why it happened, I'm not sure, and that's not why we're here to debate it today. But how do we move forward? And I think that I want to make two statements about that. One is, you know, we've been through this. We've never been allowed to dictate what our graduation looks like for us, not once. And so I think we need to give that. That's a part of bringing us forward together in this diversity, and especially as the system that tried to take it away from their grandparents and their parents and their great-grandparents. So so much of the dysfunction that we have in this community now is a result of those practices. So we can give something and then to make that better and make it right. The other part is that as a... Coming from a community that believes so much in collective care and beloved community, we take care of each other, but we also believe in taking care of those around us. I want this for everybody. You know, I want every student to be able to wear something of cultural or religious significance if that's what they want to do. And so the one thing that strikes me about what's happened here is we're here today in part because the supervisor brought up that we have to make a decision, and it appears that we have to make a decision that the administration will follow because we're at this point of question, right? We're being asked to make a decision that support... Either supports or denies this. And if we leave the policy as it is, we're not protecting those rights. We're not telling them, yes, you should do that. So I agree with Trustee Ballinger with everything you stated and leaving most of it there as the way it is, but I also agree with Trustee Pack in that perhaps we should add that one sentence, which says graduates will be allowed to wear recognized items of religious or cultural significance in a dignified manner, because that will protect that right, and that's letting the administration know that we support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just real quick, and I'll make it very brief, but if I could be so bold as to finish Erica's comment, I find it unconscionable as well that we... Our school district had a policy, or that we were denying these students their expression of culture. And so I'm proud to be part of this board that is making this decision, and I'm ready to move forward with this, and we're going to... But we're going to need to come up with a resolution pretty quick.
Well, I said, if I can summarize, it sounds like basically merging what you said, which you have worked up a draft resolution over here, motion, with adding what was supported. I don't know. I feel like you've got the closest thing on paper already, closest to making it.
Yeah. And then do you want this part?
And I've got it before me as well. And actually, I just wanted to say to Trustee Pack that I too liked that phrase from Colorado about wearing recognized items of religious or cultural significance in a dignified manner. But what worried me about that was what Trustee Raymond brought up, which was it might exclude things that are just fun, like, "Hi, Mom." If that's not construed as religious or cultural per se, I just don't want our administrators to have to be in the business of, is that a recognized item of religious or cultural significance? Is an Eagle Scout badge, for example? Is a University of Michigan or Michigan State topper? You know, "Hi, Mom." I just, you know, I don't want them to have to kind of on the fly have to adjudicate that. So that's what made me a little bit wary of that language.
But I think if you refer to the student appearance policy, I mean, that kind of allows it as long as it follows that guideline too. So I mean, I think you're... I agree. I like Holly's addition of adding this comma, and Beth's your addition as well. But it also just allow, like, if you take it that...
Whoever, can you just read it one more time and that's all?
And I just need some clarity before you go there a little bit. So like, we're talking like the Eagle Scout request that came today is courts, right?
Right.
But it's only been academic in nature in the past. And so like, you know, are you going to allow any courts from any organization, anything from that standpoint where it's like only been National Honor Society in the past, that element, you know, that's a practice that, again, has said, no, it's only the TCAP's academic court. So whatever you decide, it's fine. I just need clarity there because based on what's just been said, I think it's anything goes, other than what's within the student handbook as far as that, so.
Would that be considered like an honor code?
It is.
Okay, so maybe we can say honor, academic and honor.
And now to define it is an Eagle Scout's an honor, you know?
Because it is something you really have to work towards.
But again, who's to define anything in the community? You just go by. And to say it's not, I mean, this is the hard part that I just... For administrators, they just, whatever you decide, and we need clarity to that.
Yeah, and I think, so I do know that one of the things is like, especially this late in the game, that I think we have to be... It has to be a little wider, and I think maybe even giving guidance to why the policy is written that way may give the flexibility for the superintendent to develop rules as needed rather than us have to do it. Because as these questions arise, again, unintended, I don't want to have another special board meeting to tidy something up. So I would like it at least worded that the superintendent has a designate or designee.
But based on this, I would say it's anything other than what the student, you know, that code is set. So it's going to allow any court, anything, and so somebody can just go and buy National Honor Society cords and wear them.
I just want to finish my statement because I sort of lost my direction there, and thank you, Flannoy, for filling in the blanks. I just wanted to thank all the people here that spoke out and really appreciate the stories. And I just want to say that, you know, in the years, I'm a TCAP's grad, and in all of the years, there's always been people that have decorated their caps. So I think, you know, monitoring our administrators, monitoring that, I think it's been done in the past, and I also don't want to cloud the conversation over what we're talking about with a cord and a Boy Scout group in this particular conversation. I think this conversation is really about cultural and religion at this point. So that would be my opinion would be to add in the language that supports the cultural and traditional, and that maybe the conversation around cords happens at a different time.
Which is fine. Like I said, it just...
I just feel like at this time, it's going to really put a burden on principals in those conducting the ceremony that it... Like, I think it has to be pretty clear. I think we would write more of the intention of what we're trying to do.
Right.
But give the flexibility so it ultimately is, you know, whatever goes, but at the same time, is there's at least a guideline of why we would like to... And that way, they're not putting the... Because I don't want to put the policy that's stringent that then they are meant to follow that is going to be super awkward and it's done at the last minute, and maybe there's an unintended consequence that comes up in the meantime, other scenarios, and be back here. So I would try and say, to your point, I'm okay to add that language. I think we should potentially add that language, but it should be the guiding, which I think it was, if that's why I was trying to re... As you read it again, if it was more, if it was adding definitive, yeah, that would be.
And wherever you go, you know, the biggest part is even verbally, I need to know cords and shoals, right? Every kid has a shawl, and then some kids have cords based on, you know, TCAP's academic honors of earning those.
So could we just do all of Point D on the... Whatever this one is, the third one?
Point D of the Jordan.
Yeah, just all of part... All of Point D as... And replace, you know, I mean, I... This doesn't specifically refer to active military, and maybe we could add that to this. But then on, you know, letter five refers to school-issued and approved tassels and extra stuff. I mean, I... Is that enough guidance?
So basically, what you're telling me is, is we would allow cultural and religious?
Yeah, all of Point D, everything.
Kind of agreed, but then in four and five, I think you're going to get into like, again, so I think we're going to come back.
If they're not school-issue, they'd have to be approved prior to.
But then, do we have time to do that? How are we going to monitor it?
I guess what I would ask is maybe you take out an approved, you say, school-issued, sashes, pins, hoods, collars, mantles, that's fine, for that. And then, but then have the cultural, as we talked about, the other piece that would allow the beaded caps, would allow...
Part three. And maybe in part one, just refer to...
And then I think we can revisit deeper this a little bit, but, you know, in the short term, we have, I think that allows what I think the intent of what's been requested by the Grand Travers Band of Ottawa and Chippewa Indians. And I think honors other religions as well and culture that somebody may want to bring. However, from the rest of the regalia, it would limit to what we have now essentially. And that would allow us then at that point to be able to, if we want to revisit this policy later this summer, to talk about for next year, as maybe Beth said, some student input, you could do. But yeah, is that limit good enough for the board or not? Or that's kind of the question.
Yeah. So it said, and then in part one, just refer to Policy 5511, so.
We definitely don't want to take good point vice president here is number two, D graduate. We definitely don't want that for... But graduates are expected to wear the prescribed cap and gown without alterations.
Right.
Right. I personally would like to see...
I personally would like to see Josie's... How Josie worded it with the added, the graduates be allowed, because it does say will be allowed. It doesn't say required, there's no anything like that. So it basically just adds guidance to the policy without putting us in anything here that is going to have... Again, I'm also happy to add, you know, the superintendent can or designee can make a modification to that policy, like the graduation requirements, if there's anything that has to be addressed or may clarify, or is the ultimate source or whatever.
So let me just, just for my clarification, are you all thinking then that we do limit it to recognized items of religious or cultural significance?
It's not limited to, because the way you worded it before unlimits it. But the graduates will be allowed kind of adds emphasis to what we're... Why we're doing it.
But I mean, like, the Eagle Scout request, for example, is that a cultural?
It doesn't... It doesn't matter because it's allowed under your motion anyway.
Yeah, okay.
So like, that still is...
I mean, I was wondering, should we add the word... What does this rule out effectively?
It doesn't rule out anything. It clarifies that you're specifically allowed to do something, which you're already allowed to by the main policy, but it, to Holly's point, it gives extra clarification to, we're not trying to limit this specifically. So even if there is discussion later, this is not what we're trying to do.
Okay.
That's why I think Trustee Pack and Trustee Bird were going with it.
So in that note, you would allow any cords, anybody to buy anything off the street and wear those cords at the graduation?
Yeah. I think the point is it's an unneeded addition, but probably a good addition to say kind of the intent and that we are not trying to create policy to not allow that.
And, you know, if we try this out at this next graduation and, you know, we see what happens, and then over the summer, if the administration feels compelled to have a hold a committee, you know, kind of evaluate how it went and see if we need further clarification, then we as a board can be receptive to further revisions. I would just advocate that we get some students on that committee as well and hear their voices.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
Hey, maybe we just nailed it and we've done a great job. Who knows?
I have a lot of faith in our student body. I think most of them, the vast majority, will be tasteful and appropriate. And maybe some of them will just be fun, and that's okay. It's their day. It's their celebration.
The key is dignified.
The only drawback it'll give you is the kids that have earned those honor cords. Now a kid can just go buy them.
I think that's very unlikely.
That's kind of against that honor portrait of a graduate thing, you know?
I don't think that it's unlikely. I think, I think that there'll be some kids that will, that will do that. But I, it's going to be a false recognition. And the ones who actually earned it, you know, they know that they earned it, you know? I can go buy a doctoral robe to wear, you know, but I don't have a doctorate.
I've got one for you if you want.
Yeah, I'll just borrow yours.
And we will have administrators there to call it out.
And conversely, just because you don't wear the robe doesn't mean that you haven't earned something that you're not wearing representation of.
That's true.
I also think all of these kids, most of them have parents. So, you know, they're probably not going to wear things that are hopefully to embarrass their parents. But, you know, I would trust my kids with this decision. And I don't think they would wear a false honor cord. But that's not everybody, and I know that's, that's the case, but parents can keep an eye on that too.
It's just, you will have like the Boy Scout one, I mean, it's a perfect example. You know, that it's going to be a prior red, white, and blue that they're Eagle Scouts, you know, want to wear that.
But I think the other kids around them that know who has that earned Eagle Scout cord, I think you'll get some tacit pushback from that kind of behavior. I don't think that you'll see people willingly want to go forward with that. Does that make sense?
I think I'll maybe just say one more thing. You know, I very much appreciate everybody's comments and everybody's emails. And, you know, I would say 99% of them were very professionally done. We did have a couple of very derogatory emails, but that's what you get. And I, I hope that we've shown that we are, can deliberate professionally, respond to everybody. Obviously, we're trying to be as thorough as possible in a very short amount of time. So I appreciate everybody being here. Hopefully, this shows that we are listening and making the right decisions.
I knew you'd be up to it.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education revise its graduation requirements policy number 5460 as follows. This is in the 12th paragraph, starting with the second sentence. Students participating in commencement exercises are required to wear the prescribed cap and gown attire during the entire commencement ceremony, comma, in compliance with the student appearance policy number 5511. In addition, graduating students will be allowed to wear recognized items of cultural, religious or cultural, excuse me, significance in a dignified manner, period. Furthermore, a student who at the time of the commencement ceremony is in active military service in a branch of the Armed Forces of the United States of America will be permitted to wear the designated dress military uniform of the branch in which the student is then serving on active duty, period.
I second.
I don't even know where to go on that one, so. All right, so we're giving it to Trustee Bird. Is that the?
Okay, one more discussion item, just so I understand.
Yep.
Political statements. Under this, that would be allowed, a political statement.
Under our current code? That's what we're talking about?
Yep.
If it's in conformance with our student appearance policy, I don't see how that's different than any other day of the school year.
And that's the way I would interpret what you're saying. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page and everybody's in agreement on that.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion or questions? All right, Megan, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman Vale?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. So thank you, everyone.
You don't get that very often.
Thank you. I think that is the first time we've had such an ovation, so thank you.
Normally, there's nobody left because we're at 11 o'clock.
And I do want to thank Superintendent Van Wagner for helping us to get this information that we decided from together very quickly, as well as the other board members for really popping on the griddle.
Oh, we appreciate it.
And her team and Stacy and Megan, they worked hard at all that, so don't give me the credit.
I also want to thank Chairman Arroyo for helping to get this started too.
And thank you, Scott Newman Vale, for answering all the emails. Herculean.
We're not quite done yet, so.
Thank you, Trustee Bird. I want to thank you for your leadership on this.
I'm going to keep going because I have time. So let them do that, and then, we have public comment on that? All right, Megan, do we have a public comment?
No public comment.
All right, there is no board closing remarks, so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
A second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion adjourned.
We're coming.
Meeting adjourned.
So we're out of here over.